We have made with rejoice and be glad in it. We thank you for this opportunity that you have given us all to live, move, and have our being. Thank you once again for this town of Eatonville that we have established for your glory and for the good of its residents. We continue to lift up this administration, those in position of leadership, those who serve this community, to continue to grant them with discretion, determination, and decisions that will be beneficial and advantageous for this community. We pray for each resident of this town to bless us to live in harmony and unity with one another, and we will respect each other's personalities and properties. Thank you again for this town council meeting. We can further be educated and updated on the state and the way I pay out this community. We pray, oh God, that everything that will be said and done will be for your glory and again for the good of this community. We pray, oh God, that you will continue to bless and keep Eatonville, cause your face to shine upon it, and be gracious unto it, lift up your countenance unto it, and give it peace. We bless you and praise you and thank you again for everything you're doing here and through and forward. We honor you and we praise you and we thank you and we ask you all these things, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pray that this is to be the highest of the 96th of America and to the Father for just stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm here to help when things that we need to get on the agenda. Please refrain from speaking until it's your turn, please. For the approval of the agenda, I'm asking the council to do a couple of things. But first of my please ask, how many of you will be speaking on the public hearing session? By show of hands, if you just raise your hand if you are here to speak on the second meeting, the Hungerford Park or the request.
Mayor, we have 12, 13 minutes.
Alright, so that kind of, the reason I ask is because I was taking sure that we didn't go two minutes, but I think we're 12, 3 minutes. We'll keep that as the standard time. The other thing you probably won't need this also, but under the disclaimer I did say 10 o'clock, and it was just to make sure that we were keeping the framework there and we were keeping it moving. But I think we might be, we got it by 10. And if it approaches 10 o'clock and it looks like we're going to go no longer than, yes, we can make the decision with the council board at that time. Also before we approve the agenda, I am asking the council to please approve an amendment to the agenda. You will, you receive a proposal for a tenure water supply facility work plan to be done by CTH. I'm asking that we can add back to the consent agenda, so it'll be item four. So I'm asking for a motion on, is the move, is it?
Second.
Second, is the move, is it second, all of you can say aye? Aye, so the consent agenda will be updated to reflect the water, the water plan, the added to the consent agenda. With that, I approve the agenda with the noted changes. Is the move, is there a second? Is the move the second, all of you can say aye? Aye. We're now ready for citizen participation.
We have two, and the first one is James Benderson.
Good evening, council and residents. I'm James Benderson here. I want to put this on the record for the town, that the mayor, the mayor of the council, I'm not sure, is intentionally blocking, stalling the town impact fees. You know, we've been talking about impact fees for the last eight or so months. They haven't talked about it on the news, they didn't have impact fees adopted. We don't know where we are on that. And I even submitted an application to try to get it through the process to go through the P&amp;Z board, but of course I was told I couldn't do that, which I kind of expected, but it has to be done by the administration. So what I'm asking for is that the council require the mayor to start the impact fee process, because the town is missing out on millions and millions of dollars that we could be getting from developments that are coming. And that's pretty much what all I had to say for the day. Can we ask the council to require the mayor to do that? She's had a draft in the air since probably October, so I don't know where you are then. Thank you.
We have Steve Martin.
Mayor, I have come to you at least once or twice about an issue as a volunteer. We're at the club here, I've got 350 odd kids walking around neighborhoods and doing aspects. And the pool is my basically major, I think, entry into getting more kids to basically participate in programs and giving them self-confidence in learning how to swim. And I'm just basically saying that this funding that you may need may be able to come from outside sources. And a lot of people in the community, outside the community, want to participate and help in that regard of basically seeing that pool basically refurbished, brought back to life. There's volunteer guard programs, there's so many other resources that can reach out, scholarship funds and all that are basically sitting on the table. Once again, that pool's been down for a while now, since 2017, I believe. It reveals and reflects something about the community itself. And with a movement of trying to get that resource, the kids, who my focus is, the kids, are the ones that basically are being left behind in this and not being taken advantage of. I think a kid drowned in a party months ago, you know? These are just basic things that we can bring to the children and giving them, I believe, a chance to basically participate in something that gives them joy, especially this summer that's coming up. So my focus is basically looking at the kids, my focus is looking at that pool, seeing that pool and that position for many years. And I'm going to bring that to your attention as I did many times and make you aware of the resources that are available outside of Eatonville that is prepared to help Eatonville in getting that pool up and running.
That was our last one for the citizen participation.
First item for public hearing, approval of second, thank you for the participants. Approval of second meeting, a request for platification.
Before we change plans, I'll be reading the ordinance that I've titled tonight. Restored 2022- dash, run rate by Catalina. An ordinance of the town of Eatonville, Florida to reduce a portion of existing plant footprint to the movement, situated on lots 2 and 3 of Eatonville Commercial Center, that reported in Platteck 57, Vegas 52, 2057, of the public that is Orange County Florida, can be more particular described as follows. I'm going to skip over the loop if it's not necessary. More or less providing for conflicts and ability to. I'll be happy to read it again, I was picking in the microphone, I don't know where it sounded like there.
They're saying they can't hear, can we try to speak it?
That is the loudest thing we have for this room, because of the acoustic, we're going to have to chat.
So we'll just try to speak louder.
I'll be talking loud, I have kids.
Alright, since this, since this item, the agenda had already been brought up and public hearing, public participation was already brought, we don't need any more, right?
That's good.
Alright, so we're just going to put it on the floor for a vote. Motion to approve the second meeting of request for platification?
I mean.
Is the move, is there a second? Second. Is the move the second, all of you can say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Alright, the second item is the approval of the second meeting of the Hungerford Park Development.
Just one second, I'll read it, and I'll be loud, I promise. This is the number 2022- dash, 07, read by Catalina. An ordinance of the town of Eatonville, Florida, ordinance number 2022- dash, 7, meaning the tax for the town's comprehensive plan, for meaning tax on future land use element priority 1.6.8. Get them off, you read it once.
Alright, thank you.
Ready, you can vote on them separately, and you may discuss them later, but I'll get them all in a minute. Just take it all in a minute. The 2022- dash, 08, read by Catalina. An ordinance of the town of Eatonville, Florida, ordinance number 2022- dash, 8, meaning the town's comprehensive plan to change the future land use map designation to property zero or left to the south of East Kennedy Boulevard and the rest of North River and Red Road, for future, in commercial, in west east, on the town's official, future land use map. Providing for transmission, providing for sustainability, providing for conflicts, and providing for effective date. And then the last ordinance is this 2022- dash, 9. 2022- dash, 9, an ordinance of the town of Eatonville, Florida, ordinance number 2022- dash, 9, meaning the tax, an ordinance number 2016- dash, 8, protecting for certain remains generally located at south of East Kennedy Boulevard and east of North River and Red, providing for transmission, providing for sustainability, providing for conflicts, and providing for
Alright, well now we get to the question, Mayor, the town planner, the board is.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, members of the board and members of the community. My name is Tara Salmeri, I'm the town planner for Eatonville. Tonight's item is the application for the Hungerford property. Before I kind of go through the overview, I think there's a lot of new folks that are in the room, so I just want to talk a little bit about the application process. August 18th, the planning board heard this item. September 20th, the town council had the first reading of the item, and tonight we're at the second reading. The property that we're discussing tonight is the Hungerford property. The applicant is Alex Stringfellow of Stringfellow Planning and Design. This applicant is doing this on behalf of Orange County's Public Schools. The address is 100 East Kennedy Boulevard. The zoning is a planned unit development that's already assigned to the land. The land use already has two land uses, which is a commercial land use, so you'll see on this parcel that's outlined in a black outline, it's kind of faint, but you can see it. You'll see this dark red, and if you're colorblind, it's going to be the larger color that's not hatched. So that's the red area, that's the commercial land use. And then everything that's hatched in kind of yellow-red, that's the mixed use for the land use category. So that's one of the items we're going to discuss tonight. The surrounding property on the north is a commercial property, the south is the city of Winter Park, on the east side, it's also commercial, and on the west is Interstate 4. There are three specific amendments, and the attorney read those into the record, the three separate requests. I'm going to go over all of them, and then I'll be doing that separately. The project is approximately 100.6 acres. It already has commercial and mixed-use land use designation, like I said, and a planned unit development. So that was assigned probably in 2018. The first request is to amend the land use map, and I'll go over that. It's roughly 11 acres, to amend that commercial land use to a mixed land use category. The second request is a text amendment in the comprehensive plan that amends two tables, and those are the policies for this particular piece of land. And the third request is an amendment to the town's zoning ordinance. There's an ordinance, and like I had said, there's something called a planned development, and I'll explain that. The public engagement, there's been other public engagements about this project, but I'm only going to speak to the sanctioned ones that were hearings were advertised, and they were also led by the town, but I know that there's been quite another bit. There was a planning board workshop in April, and then a regular meeting in April 28th, where the item was tabled, brought back in August, and then recently here for a town council meeting. Some of the comments that I just want to highlight and put again into the record, some of the things that have either been shared during these public meetings, or they've been entered into records as well, is that there's lack of specifics from the developer, there's preservation of the heritage of the town, there's a question of whether or not that's happening, there's desire for local retailers, shops, and residents, and cultural events center to occur, concerns regarding the amount of residential that's being proposed, it's not affordable for the residents, there's too many apartments, and the need to create safe spaces for residents to enjoy recreation in open space, and to keep access to the lake and not have that privatized, which means that if you live in the town, you wouldn't be able to share that, that was a concern. And there were lots of other ones, but these were multiple concerns, and then the last one I had was traffic concerns. Like I said, there's three ordinances that are here tonight to be discussed. The first two involve the comprehensive plan, they were applicant request, one was that land use amendment, and the other is a text amendment. So here's the maps, and this map, I apologize that it's kind of, some of it's on the wall too, but if you'll see the one on the left-hand side, or the one that's closest to where the flags are, you'll notice that that's the original land use map, and you'll see kind of that part. Yeah, thank you. Maybe a little bit, thank you so much. Now we just have to see if we all can see that far, but I'll point out everything. Thank you so much. So the map on the left-hand side, it does have that commercial designation where that red is, if you look at it, it's kind of an L, and then there's a mixed-use land use category, but if you look to the right, that area where the red was, now the applicant is requesting that, and it's Wymore and Kennedy, so it's both of those road frontage areas, the applicant's requesting to have that mixed-use land use category versus the commercial that's being designated. The text amendments are a little bit different than just amending the map. So this is the second ordinance that was read in. There's two tables in the future land use element, that's part of the comprehensive plan, and I'll just kind of pause. A comprehensive plan, Eatonville did an update of the comprehensive plan in 2018. The comprehensive plans in the state of Florida typically go to a 20-year horizon, so the comp plan is from 2018 to 2038. In that comprehensive plan, there are policies and goals and objectives that get put in. The town council in the first reading heard the request, and there is a mixed land use table that you can barely see on this, but I'll read it so that you can kind of understand what it is. There's a table and a category will give what percentages are permitted in the mixed use. So the current land use allowed a minimum of 5% for residential and a maximum of 20. The applicant's original request was to increase it to a 30%, it was reduced to 25, which has now a 25% increase in what is currently permitted. The second part of that request is to change the table on the commercial and office designation, which then would be, the commercial office minimum was 20%, and the applicant requested it to be reduced to 5. And then commercial retail, the land use mix is 40%, and the applicant requested 10%. For both of those categories, that's a decrease of 75% of what the current land use had. The other part of the comprehensive plan text amendment was to change a table having height that currently is in the plan for 40 feet, to be able to increase that for 10 feet. The applicant's request stated that they wanted to have architectural design elements, and that was the need. And lastly, the ordinance for the zoning. So it's the same piece of land, and the land use itself is in place, that's monitored by the state, and then the local review is the zoning ordinance. So most of the requests of the zoning ordinance changes are to match the comprehensive plan request changes. In addition to that, the applicant did ask for additional uses to be permitted in this application as well. And the application for those particular uses were to include a farmer's market, allow parks and recreation, multiple family uses, accessory uses, essential services, and those were the updates. The other part of a zoning ordinance is, talks about dimensional requirements, so if you have a home or you live anywhere, you'll know that that house has to set back certain parameters. They've asked for some modifications in that as well, and then along with having a reduction in a minimum lot size for townhomes, instead of 5,000 square feet, to do 1,800. Their request was to cap their dwelling units at 350 dwelling units for the site. In the first hearing that was voted on and was sent to all the agencies for review, there were two conditions that were put on this project in the first hearing. A developer's agreement need to be executed prior to the site development plan or plat approval, and then another condition of approval was to develop a design guidebook to be consistent with the comp plan, and then also to be consistent with the vision that the applicant had put forward as part of the RFP selection process that they had in order to obtain the purchase of this property. In September 30th, now all of those things, when I first started, said that we had a hearing already, and the process of changing land uses, you have to package it, and then you send it to the Department of Economic Opportunity for review, along with the DOT, the Regional Planning Council, the Water Management District, Orange County, Department of Environmental Protection, and the Department of State. They have 30 days to make responses, they did have responses, and said that on their, for their agencies, there was no impact for the changes. The Water Management District did identify that water supply plan has not been submitted, and flagged that, as you heard tonight, that is, that's going to be on the agenda for the council to be approving, a consultant to do that. So in this process, the plan amendments, in the second hearing, depending on what the outcome is, if the plan amendments do get approved, there's a 30-day waiting period for challenges, that's a statute requirement, so any citizen or anyone that was affected party can challenge the, challenge the decision. If that, if council approves and there are no challenges, then the next steps are the development agreement. We haven't really talked about where in the process the design guidebook goes in. I've recommended it be part, and to be concurrent with the development agreement. There's a plat approval process, site plan approvals, they go through a staff level review, they'll also go to the planning board, and then they go to the town council. Everyone at that point can only evaluate it in regards to how the policies are in place today. It has to have substantial evidence to deny that at that point. And then if all of that is, continues to go, then building permits would be issued, construction meetings occur, and then the development begins. I think I've talked a lot about really what's been before you, there's lots of information on the town website that has more in-depth staff reports that have been presented in detail in the past, and I'll open that, conclude my presentation, if council has any questions for me right away, I can answer those, or I can wait.
We're going to see the, we're going to see the next presentation. We're going to have a presentation from the developers, and the billboard is open for
So this time, I think we're going to ask for the applicant to come forward so that they can have their presentation.
Please hold all of your permits until public participation can begin.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the town council, and members of the public who are here.
Can you speak in the microphone?
I will do that. Is that any better? Good evening, my name is Derek Bruce, and I'm a lawyer with the Gunster Law Firm, and have the privilege of representing the Hungerford Park Development Team. First, let me acknowledge and introduce several members of our team who are here this evening. Gentlemen, you all want to understand, we have Alex Stringfellow, who's the applicant and Stringfellow Planning, Shawn Myers, and Raul Vesia. Kyle Sanders, another part of our team, couldn't be here tonight due to a family health emergency, but he senses your presence as well. I'd like to start off our presentation by acknowledging something. We have a lot of members of the public here, and we certainly believe that robust public participation is a good thing. And over the last year and a half, we've had a significant conversation with the community and with the town, and we've heard you. There's many different viewpoints reflected in this room, some will hear from tonight, some who want to be quietly supportive, and still others who may just be here and haven't made up their minds yet. Regardless of where you may fall on that, on this particular proposal, we know that change can be intimidating, can be scary. Uncertainty can move us into a state of paralysis to where essentially we'd rather do nothing than face what's unknown. But in the next few minutes together, I hope to convey to you why we believe that the proposal we've presented to the town is a positive step for you. I'm going to try to move relatively quickly, because a lot of what we'll present here tonight is information that we've shared at previous public meetings, as well as the town council. But the Hungerford Park development, the proposed development is about 100 acres of what we propose to put to a mix of uses, and be a mixed-use development. That would include office space along Wymore Road, retail along Kennedy Boulevard, and then several acres of open space, which will be in and around the two lakes, Lake Wilmerson and Lake Bell, six acres of civic space, which currently is proposed to be on this northeast corner right there, and then a mix of single-family townhomes and multifamily residential. Here you can see what we're talking about in a little more detail. Again, those. Again, those, the commercial and office is right here on Wymore. The retail would be centered on and fronting on Kennedy Boulevard. This space is six acres that Orange County Public Schools will deed to the town upon the closing of the transaction where my client purchases the 100-acre site. And that can be put to a use that the town, or a mix of uses the town designates. And in fact, we went back and took a look, the town has actually, through its architect, done some visioning about what can be done on six acres of property, and you'd be surprised just how much in the way of use, how much, how much of access to infrastructure and to new development and amenities can fit on that six-acre site. As we move down farther south, the residential component is here, right in the middle, is the multifamily. Down a little farther down Wymore Road is our post-townhomes with a dedicated entrance to them off of Wymore Road, so it reduces impact, traffic impacts up Wymore and on Kennedy Boulevard. And then finally, here on the southeast portion of the site, would be single-family residential homes. Also, it may be a little hard to see on this particular plan, but there's two red, two pieces, two things that are highlighted in red, and those are pedestrian walkways that are designed and meant for use by any Udon resident in the public or in general. And that is, that is an idea and a concept that after listening to and hearing from the community, we changed the single-family residential model to incorporate those and include access to both Lake Wilderness and Lake Bell and to disturb less, fewer weapons. I think it's important to provide a bit of history regarding the Hungerford property because it is helpful in understanding where we are today. And it's there for reading, I don't presume to need to read every bullet, but just, it goes back to 1899 when Edward Hungerford deeded property to a board of trustees to establish a private vocational school for the education of black students in Eatonville. And the trustees operated that school until 1950, when it was determined that the school could no longer operate primarily due to financial reasons. Okay, thank you. All right. And later on in 1950, the trustees, along with what was the predecessor organization to be, Orange County Public Schools, went to the Circuit Court of Orange County and secured a conveyance of the property of the Hungerford Industrial School, Robin Hungerford Industrial School, to Orange County Public Schools. And the, and OCPS operated the Hungerford School, what ultimately became Hungerford Prep, until 2009. In 2009, the school closed. And then since 2009, there's been an ongoing conversation about this particular real estate, what to do with it and how, and how it should be approached. And starting in 2017, there were, there's been a number of different opportunities and proposals that have been presented for the town's consideration. In 2017, there was a purchase offer and redevelopment proposed by Up Development that was approved by the town, but ultimately the company never closed on it. And part of that was due to the plans that it had for the property. And then in February of 2020, and again in 2021, the town, along with OCPS, sought a request for proposals, sought requests for proposals from developers for ideas and concepts on how to develop this property. And I think it's important to look at what the town and, oh gosh, what the town and the developers and OCPS sought in February of 2020 was a proposal, and I realize it may be a little tough to see with the backing, but it was an urban, pedestrian-friendly, the microphone's on, I think. So in 2020, the town and Orange County Public Schools sought proposals for a mixed-use development that I submit not dissimilar to what we're looking at today. Unfortunately, there were no responses submitted at that time. But then the following year, both OCPS and the town went out together, this was RFP opportunity number two. The town got, and OCPS got three proposals that time, but all were deemed to be non-responsive. So finally, OCPS moved forward with the curve of RFP, that's RFP opportunity number three, and it was awarded to our predecessor, the Justice Department Group, which subsequently assigned the project until the opportunity was. So there's two important things that I think are important to take away from this slide. The first is, while there's been a lot of discussion, we need to be factual about how the Hungerford property came into existence and where it's been. It's never been owned by the town of Eatonville. And the second is that there have been multiple opportunities for anyone to, our team, others, and even folks with a vision for the town of Eatonville that may be different than ours, to have come forward and presented those to Orange County Public Schools and the town of Eatonville if they had a vision and wanted to pursue it. I won't spend a lot of time on this slide because Ms. Selmeri went through the process of amending the comp plan, other than to say that we've followed the requirements of Chapter 163 to the letter and had our transmittal hearing on September 20th of 2022. And then seven state and local government entities have been given the authority to provide comment on our proposal, our proposed amendment, and all of them were, had no objection to this proposal. And then, and now, we're here tonight for a second public reading, which is the adoption of the comp plan. Now, the plan that we've presented and that you've seen in a number of different contexts was developed with consistency with the town's existing comprehensive plan and future land use map in mind. And in developing this plan, our team engaged with elected officials and community leaders and stakeholders, both prior to and after submitting our application. We reviewed the town CRA plan, the development plan that I'm going to refer to in just a little bit. Held two community meetings, one in April of last year when Valcom was believed and we were providing support for the project, and now, just last week, January 31st, when we presented to the community. And then the plan went before the, our plan went to the planning board on August 8th to the town council on September 20th. You can't see it in part because the background is white, but on the bottom left-hand side, bottom right-hand side, rather, of this slide is a copy of the cover page from the 2015 CRA redevelopment plan. It was a study that was requested and paid for by the town itself to envision how its resources, how the assets that are within the town, including the Hungerford property, would be developed. And the plan identified five themes that I'd just like to highlight on. Creating a quality sense of place, character, and image, developing high-performance infrastructure, reinforcing a place that embraces history, culture, and education, a connected town, and a place that is attractive to business and economic opportunity. We believe our plan provides that. And you may have seen these in inserts a little earlier, but these are renderings of retail along, that we envisioned along the boulevard. These are the townhomes that I've referenced, that would be just off of Wymore Road. These are the, these are renderings of what would be the single-family residences with access both off Kennedy as well as Wymore. And these are the multifamily apartment units that would be behind the retail and behind the commercial, kind of set backs from both Kennedy and Wymore. And the design has been made deliberately low-profile, so in other words, rather than four floors were building higher or having higher ceilings and building higher, we have lowered it so that the onlooker from either Kennedy or Wymore looking over buildings, the commercial office and the retail space would not see these.
I'm sorry, it's not public. You have an opportunity to speak without the public.
So we've also incorporated open spaces, pedestrian walkways are reflected on the bottom left, like, I call them walkways, these people on a bike, and the walkway and the EVO that is on the western side of Lake Albuck leads to, and kind of leads to a community gathering center, is something we envisioned for the town and for the community in the opening of the six that we have in the plan. Now, the plan emphasis, the 2015 CRA redevelopment plan emphasized embracing history and culture and education in the town of Eatonville. And a part of the commitments that we have made about this in our team, as well as publicly as we engage here with the town of Eatonville, is to work with, is to work and develop partnerships with businesses, vocational and not-for-profit organizations to provide mentoring, programs, and education for young and even adult residents of the town of Eatonville, so that they can successfully enter the workforce, or if there are any that want to transition, then that, those are very distinct possibilities. And then our plan for the property includes, I'm sorry, I keep, touching on the wrong button, but this is something that I think is pretty darn important, is to create a focus on honoring those histories and building branches to extend its vibe and culture into the next generation. So we're proposing to partner with community leaders and organizations as well as Florida HCCU, and not just more, but one of all of the southeast, to try to encourage graduates who are, who are starting their professional careers and or, and or have a desire to live in a connected community, likely to build, to come and make us their home. Our plan also includes the establishment of an arts district. And so the, and so the theme that we have, or not theme, but the question that we've been asked time and again as we've talked about this proposal is, what are the benefits? What are the benefits to the town of Eatonville? And much of this I've shared previously, so I won't belabor a lot of it, but upon the closing of the transaction for our client's purchase of the Hungerford property, the town of Eatonville will receive in excess of $4 million from Orange County Public Schools as part of that transaction. And this is money that can absolutely be used for the town's utility and transportation infrastructure, these things that we hear about when we are here at the town council. And one of the things that has come to, that I, that's come to mind, that she and I have talked a lot about, in fact, we met with the prior town manager who, town administrator, who talked about the opportunities that exist for grants and funding from, for both the federal and the state level for the town of Eatonville, much of which are part of matching those, those requirements to go. He said, well, that is the dayman and the merchant of breaking service rights. Okay, I'm sorry. The 2021 Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act from, that was passed by, by Congress and signed by the president, has over $550 billion of federal investment, transportation, water, infrastructure, and connectivity, all of which are, are things that have, where they've made a focus, creating interest and bringing equity to historically disadvantaged communities, that we see Eatonville being the right and a perfect place to apply for and to be, to be a recipient of those kinds of resources. So that $4 million in the form of what we like to call a public private partnership can be leveraged to generate much more. In addition, Hungerford Park, our populations, by looking at impact fees from communities around Eatonville, we projected that we'll pay almost $1 million in fees to the town over the next 10 years. And then, and maturely, no, I'm sorry, over the next 10 years, the project is projected to average, to generate an average of $2.5 million in property taxes. Once the project is built out, we'll allow for shopping, dining, entertainment options for the residents and visitors, compared to, and then, as we said, the plan includes accessible off, open space for the town. So our request of action is exactly the same that we asked of you on September 20th and that this council moved forward with transmittal. And that, the only difference is that this is second reading, and so this would be to, rather than moving it for transmittal, this would be to move adoption of the proposed amendments reflected in, in, or those 22-7, 22-8, sorry, 2022-7, 2022-8, and 2022-9. We're here to answer questions if we have them, and we have taken the liberty of writing in the proposed motions. The one nuance that I think is different, and Ms. Selmeri pointed this out, is that the land use space that we requested to be changed from 20% to 30% for residential was, 25% was accepted at, to be transmitted to the state, and we're comfortable at that 25%. So rather than 20 to 30, we're allowing it, so 20, a change in the land use now in ordinance 2022-7, 1.68A, from 20 to 25%, and also the same in 2022. Thank you, and we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Give us about a couple of minutes to switch over, and then we'll be ready to open up for public comments. Thank you for your patience. All right, we are getting ready to call by names for public participation in the public. Excellent, ready. In three, two, and one. All right, the public, please now open this thing.
We have in, in line, the board, you can come to the board.
Mr. Perry, please speak. If you'll soon my source.
Can you, yes.
In line, Mr. Perry, Executive Worker of the Sensations Reserve Eatonville Community, Inc., PEC. PEC objects to the proposed ordinances and the developers' proposal because it is inconsistent and incompatible with the town's 2018 comprehensive plan as detailed in the written statement I have provided to the town clerk and to the members of the council and to Mayor Gardner. PEC objects to the proposed zoning changes amendments to the Town of Eatonville's 2018 comprehensive plan. PEC urges the Town Council to vote "no" during the second reading ordinance numbers 2022-dash-oh-seven, 2022-dash-oh-eight, and 2022-dash-oh-nine. The Hungerford Large Scale Amendment and the accompanying proposed amendments to the 2018 Plan, the companion revisions to H-dash-P-R-D ordinance, 2016-dash-oh-eight, and the revisions to the future land use map are inconsistent and incompatible with the goals, objectives, and policies set forth in the 2018 Plan. PEC notes the complexity of the land use and zoning decisions that are before the Town Council and the significance of these decisions to the preservation of this town's past and the development for this town's future. During the fall of 2022, PEC provided administrative support to Mayor Angie Gardner's hosting of three community meetings so that members of the public were informed and engaged about the plans for the Hungerford property. The input was overwhelmingly against the proposed development, which will harm the community and fail to preserve its rich culture and history. Quite simply, this development will erase this living, thriving, historical community. PEC has a unique interest in ensuring that the development of the Hungerford property is consistent with protecting the unique history and culture of the town. The proposed development involves a new property that has historically been dedicated to the Public Trust for the purpose of educating the Black children of Eatonville since 1897. The proposal is not for the benefit of the community and will instead take over the community. The proposal is inconsistent with the 2018 Plan for several reasons, but I want to take a few seconds to focus on the issue of housing. The 2018 Plan requires that the town provide affordable housing to residents, yet this proposal will serve only to attract newcomers who can afford to live in the development's pricing residential limits. And here I want to recognize the intelligence of the citizens of Eatonville because at every public meeting, they raise the issue of housing, the fact that Eatonville citizens would not be able to afford the proposed housing. Why is that? Because current data identifies Eatonville's median household income as $57,972, with the median income of the town at $21,805. But if you dig a little deeper, the outrageousness of the proposal becomes absolutely there.
All right, thank you. Thank you. You have to stop right here as we're going to this. Thank you, Mr. Perry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Attorney, because it's been worded out, worded out. But I do want to address that there was, in regards to yielding time, is that if the council agrees to do that, is this the time step they got earlier?
You can do it now, but it needs to be by the consensus of the council.
Okay, so if.
No, I think that person, they, they, they have to give up time, speaker.
Anyone else who wants to be called in?
I think it should be yielded time, not over five minutes, but at least get them closed.
All right, so let me just put the motion on the floor. The motion is to yield time at least one minute?
No, I mean, they're yielding three minutes. Somebody give them their time, three, the other three minutes, that's six minutes, they give them the other person of their time.
If I were there going to be three and three, if you yield it, I, I would accept a portion of the time. My wrong attorney, it's up to us.
That, that's up to you, but if, but if like someone says five, it'd be like a minimum, you'll, you'll take.
Two minutes. All right, so two minutes. So the motion is on the floor to yield two additional minutes to a speaker from another speaker that has completed a citizen participation form. So it's been moved, is there a second here?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
So it's that a yes, councilman?
You need to get time for discussion. I would say I'm okay with the yield, but the yield is one minute. I'm only talking, not, uh, six minutes.
That's a minute.
Wait, I'm sorry, please hold your comments. The motion's for two minutes. We discussed it right prior to the motion. So, and we were at a vote, because I didn't hear you, that's why I asked. But if it's a no vote, that's usually a yes.
But if it's a yes.
Okay, so it's five minutes. So then that would go back to Mr. Perry. If you want to finish in two minutes, you can yield it to me. Okay, councilman?
I need two minutes.
Please hold, please hold your applause.
May, uh, may he, uh, who, 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 uh, and, uh, come to the board.
Yes, I'm, 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 I'm a person who has submitted a form, they're yielding their time. Can you say it while you're saying?
Yes.
It is inexcusable for a development located in a federal opportunity zone, which allows investment in the nation's most economically-challenged communities through tax incentives, that also could be eligible for low-income housing tax credits, which is a federal program that subsidizes the creation of affordable housing. By approving this proposal, the town is knowingly allowing hundreds of houses to be built that are unavailable because they are unaffordable to current residents of the town, the vast majority of whom are Black. This is not only incompatible with the town's vision for future development in the 2018 Plan, and here's the irony, it is discriminatory. For these reasons, PEC objects to the proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan for zoning changes. PEC respectfully requests that members of the Town Council vote "no" on these amendments.
All right, then, please hold your applause. Anybody who can, you can go next.
We have our Joyce, Harvey. If you can come to the board, please. You know, it's Joyce, I can trace my ancestry back to slavery and a generation after slavery in the town. Laisishin is a Makoto word. Can you speak up, please? Laisishin is a Makoto word for, for, where the same old things still are. And so they should say like, I feel like. It's never been the same. I want to say, I don't think the developers are the devil. I think they tried some of the things that might be negative to a lot of people here, but the basic issue is the feeling that our rights are always stripped away from us. The land here may have led to a lot of people being here, but it was dominated by a white, modern doctor for the education of Black children who could not be educated here in Florida in the public schools with white children. And so the Orange County Public Schools, if we're incorrect, makes a deal when they're running out of money and not helping our schools. And we're paying taxes, but they're helping the other schools, but not ours. And we have to sell them everything we have to keep educating the kids that could go to the school. But the kids in the more prominent schools, they have to give a boot. The school system shouldn't have been helping us, assisting us. We are citizens. Even though we're judged as being, what, one-fifth of human or something crazy like that? It's like the state of Florida is attacking the legacy, the culture, and the history of Black people. You cannot teach in school about oppression. So much of our history is oppression and it's painful. And I'm, I'm 66 years old, I'm exhausted. It's like the same, like what I was saying in the second grade. It's like some things never change. A lot of that's left up to the white people, then. And all you guys, you guys got to keep this fight going because it's like we are targets of, it's almost like state-sponsored terrorism because we don't have equal protection among y'all. The court was like, forget what the land was intended for, you can sell it to whoever you want. And it's not the developers. It's like we should be the ones negotiating for this, for a collaborative effort with them for what we want. And, um, I'm just here representing my father, who couldn't get a home anywhere but Eatonville. I still have a, uh, 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 can you second your, uh, your, your, your.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. We have Julian Johnson?
Mr. Johnson, please start speaking, sorry, that scared you. Was anyone yielding time to you? So you went and tackled on it one time?
No, nobody's yielding a time.
Okay.
I'll be, I'll be short. Honestly, I'm just going to apply some pressure real quick, that's it. Nothing major, but I am here to represent, so I'm Julian Johnson, how y'all doing? Um, 1887 first, um, 142 Lincoln Boulevard, Town Council, Vice Mayor, Mayor. Uh, thank you all and thank you everybody for, you know, coming out tonight. Uh, that shows the, the grassroots work is actually working. And I want to give thanks to all of my guys who don't have a voice, all of the guys who didn't have a voice and didn't, and weren't here today. So I have a message from Mr. Shane McKnight. And he said, "Where were these developers when the town was rid up with drugs and violence? Now that the town is in better shape crime-wise, you're ready to pump and dump. It's like you were waiting for us to kill off each other and go to prison forever so you could come in and do what you're trying to do now." I did 13 years in federal prison. Fortunately, I was able to make it out. The town looks totally different from when he left in 20, in 2008. The thing that hit me most was when I saw the school vacant. That was a signature of the town as well as the water tower. So if y'all had the same energy to invest then like you do now, a lot of us wouldn't have even went to jail or done that time. I was indicted under Project Safe Neighborhoods in which Mr. Cole spoke at my bond hearing that was denied. Before him, they put the weed and seed to protect, which Anthony Grant denied because it was geared to send us all to federal prison for drug offenses. Um, I'm not going to go through all of that, but pretty much all I'm here to say is the streets know, the people know what's going on. And, you know, if, you know, please make the right decision for our future. We're here, we're standing up here with you, we're here to work with you, but if you work against us, I will let you know that we will recall any council member on this seat effective immediately if you make the wrong decision tonight. Because the streets are talking, the people are talking, and the people are angry and furious because everybody think this land is only for education. And y'all did not do a great job at telling people and letting people know, and you know you did it. You know you did it, so I'm just letting you know. Tonight, like, the people rallying up for real, so y'all have a good night. I'm letting you know, that is what it is. I told you I'm gonna be short, but that's my promise, y'all.
We have, uh, John.
Good evening. I'm in South Beach. Eatonville is a fascinating, Eatonville is tourism, culture, heritage, art, education, and the oldest black township in America. And that's something to be proud of. The redevelopment will increase taxes, increase crime, increase police and rescue. It was, uh, it would also relocate Black people and Black heritage. It's about that. Those apartment complexes will increase crime and police protection. We just can't survive. I threw a program here, a proposal here, and if you look at my proposal here, if you look at, uh, Wymore Road, starting back in the very back, pop, pop, popping back there, we got a few townhouses. We come down with, uh, to the Hostile Zone, the new building that's being built right now, and then we go to the Office Commercial Zone. When we get to Kitten Avenue, we put a grocery store and we put gases in there and gas, gasoline in there so we can do business as, as Black people in Eatonville, have all amenities. And then we go to the main street and the middle of the park right there, one strip, we call that, uh, Freedom Parkway. On Freedom Parkway, we have retail, we have restaurants, we have retail entertainment, we have, uh, a Zoraia Hershey Museum. At the end of the project factor, the overbuilding, we have a, uh, ethnic theater, so we can have concerts, concerts like, where we want, country-western, R&B, enough to sit 5,000 people. And then we go back to, that we go to Cedar Creek, Disney World, and Disney World get all that revenue. But we're going to put a place in North Orange County, that's right, not just Eatonville, but North Orange County where we can do that. Also, where the education component, we're going to teach hospitality, culinary skills, and we're going to teach people how to be able to get a job in Eatonville, not in this prison, but work in Eatonville. And as we go past the, the hotel, we got a kids' zone. We got splash pad, recreation pond, we got places where you can shoot basketball, pickleball, tennis court, we got, we got things where kids can enjoy themselves. And then we go behind the Zoraia Museum and Education Center, then we got a grassy park back there so we can enjoy, uh, a hard and leisure time, walking and exercise. But more important, anything, it won't just be for Eatonville, but in North, North Orange County, there's nowhere where people can come downtown and have a good time. You know, you got to do, so it's going to be all that from Nashville. So we're going to have not just, we're going to have chef and spa restaurant. We're going to have, we got the best, uh, vegan place in, in, in Orlando, at Lorda Cane Ingo, we're going to make a place for home. We're going to kind of invite jazz people into our zone. So anyway, I think, but anyway, so I think that.
Name?
Who's ready?
Eatonville, Eatonville, US.
What was the name of here?
Eatonville.
Where?
All right, please hold, you yielded your time.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you have the time now.
And so how are we going to pay for, we're going to actually get into a deal where we go land trust so that we can own the land, lease the land, not sell the land? So when, when, when the women who are watching through that property, they, they, then what? Land back, can we say? Land back, that's what we're going to do. And then we're going to create an HLA zone so the HLA can actually provide the, the, the upkeep on those properties so they can build themselves. And so our council members can, um, can work on things more importantly. Yes, councilmen, we have a lot, a lot of property complex right here on North Kennedy. And we just believe, we just believe that that's enough right now. Let's kind of figure that deal out. I have nothing against you guys, I'm the law we got. We're just going to do this thing together, man. And so I should like to vote no, put a stall in the program, and let's do our thing and get together as people. We have over 10, but now we're going to, we're going to stand, how to give back and how to give to the community, this ain't competition, this is all about Eatonville. And we said, man, what?
I thank you. Please hold all comments and applause. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Theo McWhite, and I may need someone to yield be there in a minute too, so, keep that in mind. Most game, my name is Theo McWhite, um, you know, instead of saying that they're, they're not making any more land, and it's really true. One other thing that we are forgetting is our youth. I grew up in the town of Eatonville where I played Little League baseball, I played basketball at Humphrey Elementary with Mr. Floyd, I played football, Mr. Pitts was my Eatonville Rocket, football coach, and the lessons that they taught me, even Mr. Beecham was my baseball coach, the lesson that they, not only me, but every young man that plays sports in here, in the town of Eatonville. We have to make our town youth-friendly. If you look at Winifred and Maitland, yes, I live in the Doctor Field area, but we're not giving back to our kids. The development, yes, you guys got great plans, but I don't see any practice football field. You know, we got a lot of youth football teams in our area, where are those kids gonna go practice? They took Humphrey's football field, I know they took down the schools, but they're gonna left the football field. We're not giving back to our kids. You know, I went to Rollins College, my neighbor, Theodore Brunson, who's a judge here in the town of Orlando, he was the reason why I went to Rollins College, cause I wanted to make a better life for myself. Now I'm back here, my mom still lives here, but we have to come up with a plan that's gonna be beneficial for the citizens, that's gonna create some interest for our youth. I was the chair of my cousin, Anna, Anna Johnson. I was the first director for this building that we're sitting in tonight. Ronald Rogers hired me as the Town of Eatonville Recreation Supervisor. I kept the job for about three months, yet I was offered a teaching job at Winifred High School, and that's where my career started. I just retired from One County Public School after thirty-five years. I taught a lot of students, and I taught math. I was sharing with a friend of mine today about Dave Rans, he's a gentleman that's out of Nashville, Tennessee, that teaches finance with algebra. Orange County Public School had that as a math class. They got rid of it. I made my son take that class because I wanted him to understand finance. As black people, we don't do that very well. I just built the house in Taylor Park, where I bought the land from my mom's neighbor.
I'm sorry, you yielded your minutes, we can't divide. We have, we have to stop, we have to stop. Uh, we have to stop, Mr. McWhite, sorry.
Thank you. Our next one would be Aldous Benjom, too, or singer? Is that a girl?
Aldous Benjom?
Aldous Benjom. Hello, everybody. Um, sixty-three years old, I grew up in Eatonville, and ain't nothing like it used to be before. And, uh, the disrespect, uh, gentlemen there, listen, everybody, please, see, this is the history of, of black people. This is the history, these are the people who want to do stuff for the city, for the black people, not you, and sir, you even know disrespect. You said about being disrespectful, I think when they stood up and, with this, and plus they get to speak long as they want, when they stood up, tell me what they trying to do for Eatonville, everything that I seen up there, I was, it took everything I had not to bother them. Nothing I seen up there, any of my friends that grew up here gonna be able to afford. And when the lady, excuse my name, but I don't know her name, was talking about the part of the money, what is made here, for y'all to come and put all this stuff up here and think we as black people gonna be able to stay here, shame on you, sir. And I hope y'all sleep with it, I really hope you can.
Please address the center of the crowd. Thank you.
Yeah. That's what y'all are gonna say.
Thank you.
Ryan Novak?
Good evening, everyone, mayor, council residents, Ryan Novak, Eatonville resident. I went to, uh, one of the meetings at the library that Mr. Johnson was talking about, and it was very informative, and I'm glad that I went. After the meeting, I spent a solid hour talking with another resident, and they asked me, "What do you want for Eatonville?" So I went on a rant, giving a peccacuccia about my life, and they cut me off, and they "Ryan, what do you want for Eatonville?" So then I had to think about it a little bit further, and, and as I looked around, I said, "I, I guess what I, I feel is just missing as I, as we stand here and we converse, is a vibrance to, to this amazing main street that Eatonville has and offers. Beautiful bike lanes, well-lit streets, a gorgeous atmosphere, extremely inviting." But as we sat there and conversed, there was just generally a vibrance that was missing that evening that we should be able to bring to our town, to our residents. And then I got to thinking a little bit further on that one. You know, this is a historical district, and it should remain as such. It's been compared to areas like Charleston, Nashville, New Orleans, Savannah even. These places have additional draws that we do need to keep and bring more tourism and more people into the area. And so I started thinking a little bit further, and a little bit more close to home here in Orlando, and I said to myself, "This could be a better Black Park app. Line this main street with amazing black-owned shops, have patrons spending their money and enjoying the community that has been so amazing and welcoming to me while I've been here." So, are these guys the right developers for this land? I, I can't say, um, are, are they, are they wrong? I don't know, their intentions seem okay. Uh, the land has a checkered history as best as I've read, but there's, there's additional things that they could also do to help the residents of this town. Namely, if you go down the other side of I-4 on Kennedy, OCPS still owns a parcel of land. Maybe they could apply some pressure and get that land also in the deal to be deeded back to the town. There's a lot of creative things that can still happen because the contract isn't closed, and if it does, again, keep that historical vibe, keep that Savannah-esque, uh, idea in mind as we grow and build the community, so that for generations to come, and I, I forget who had said it, but, you know, leaving, uh, the town better than we had it. And, yeah, Mr. Beecham, I, I, I loved what you had up there, that was phenomenal, and you said by magic word, pickleball, so sign me up. Sign me up. Uh, thank you, everyone.
And the young lady yielded her minutes. Yeah. Who, young lady's friend?
Yes.
Here. Yes. Here. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, council members, and my fellow residents of the historic town of Eatonville. I'm gonna start off by, I want to have you think of a quote that a friend of mine in two thousand and eighteen, Will Long Drive, champion in Borri salad stated, "Don't be a moment, be a movement." Don't be a mo- moment, and I'm gonna, I wanna state a certain thing, a certain, um, refer to some things. Don't be a moment where we've signed a developer's agreement for the late western apartment units that only gives ten units dedicated to Town of Eatonville essential employees at a ten percent discount off of the market rate, thus unaffordable. Don't be a moment where we have ninety-six units at the unclaimed, which they say is going to be affordable housing, but there's nothing in there that would dedicate any of those homes back at Oceanus to Town of Eatonville residents. Don't be a moment where I found and asked for a copy of the Hostile Development Development where it's been stated that we should receive complimentary Wi-Fi internet services, but unless I missed it, it's not quoted in this agreement. Don't be a moment where in two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and eighteen, it may have been okay to have apartment units, but what has been stated, and I will repeat, we have four hundred and thirty-seven units at the late western apartments, ninety-seven units of concentrate and unclaimed, so if we're escalating two point five individuals to occupy those spaces along with the three hundred and fifty residential units in the proposed development, we're looking at approximately two thousand two hundred and ten additional residents to come into historic Town of Eatonville, thus almost doubling our population in a matter of five to eight years. When normally, and someone will probably correct me, but what is the average potential growth in a municipality? What is what makes the city of Orlando's average run? I'm probably certain, I would probably, um, challenge most of you that it is not at those run rates. One of the things that I would also like to bring reference to is the information that we received back from the various, um, entities that the Comp Plan Amendment was submitted to. And it was, quite honestly, um, kind of funny that tonight, the focus is gonna be on the water, water study that was referenced that the town had not completed, they were required to complete by May of two thousand and twenty-two. In a previous planning zoning meeting, it was mentioned to us that the Town of Eatonville was already operating at eighty-five percent of its cap permit, that's your consumption use permit for water supply, prior to any development on the, on the, uh, west end of Winifred, I mean, of Kennedy Boulevard. So, people will probably say, Andrew, why are you standing? You're on the plan of zoning work. But I stand before you, after doing some additional research, in hearing the voices of my fellow residents, I too ask that the council members object the proposed amendments before you tonight, as I too find them to be inconsistent and incompatible with the two thousand and eighteen work plan. I won't go through all of the markings that I found in the references in the Comp Plan where I feel that is incompatible, but some of those, as we, as I will probably repeat, affordable housing, the average income guys is twenty-eight thousand dollars in our town. And that doesn't say that we will not, um, attract different level of professionals, and we pray that we do attract this regular sort of professionals. Okay. Thank you. Will Long?
Hello, everybody, I'm Debbie Shaw.
Please, can you speak to the mic, please?
Thank you. I'm Debbie Shaw, I'm sixty-six years old, I was raised right here in Eatonville, um, my kids were as well. Everybody have good points about what Eatonville needs and where they should be going, but the one thing we are forgetting is this, this is our town. Developers have a good idea, but it's not us. It's not what we want, it doesn't reflect us. And I wanna know is, when y'all just decided to get these developers or wherever they came from, did y'all do a survey to the public and even ask what we want, what we need? We have, we, we, we're here, we're not going anywhere. Some of us gonna, we was raised here, we're gonna die here. We're not moving. And like you said, the one thing about Eatonville, Eatonville is a rich, rich piece of land. And the reason I say that, we sit in the middle of everything, we're right in the middle of Orlando, Winifred, Maitland. This is pride land here, and we need to take pride in our land and not just set it off for the first thing they come back and hand you a few dollars and say, hey, we can do this and do that. If they are allowed to bring the houses and they wanna bring him, we're gonna be outnumbered, and y'all gonna be out of y'all's seat, the police, y'all gonna be different too, it's gonna be a war, so it's not just us, it's everybody. But their proposal affects all of Eatonville, and I want you guys to vote no.
Good evening, town council, good evening, mayor, vice mayor, good evening, residents. All the men folks from Eatonville, stand up. I'm proud of y'all. I've seen, I've been at, I've been at many meetings, I've seen women, I've seen women, so y'all can see that, I've seen many women, but I haven't seen any men. I'm proud of you guys. It's not many, but it, it's, it's a start, y'all, it's a start. Anyway, I'm here to talk about this property that's, that's for grabs. Um, four million dollars will come from Orange County. What's gonna come from you guys when y'all develop this? I don't hear anything about that, I don't hear anything about the kids, as, as a gentleman stated earlier. Um, what's coming from you guys when, when it's get developed, all right? Um, there's been a lot of land that's been, a lot of land that's been sold there, and the kickback's not coming back to us, it's not coming back to Eatonville. I don't know where the money's going, I don't see the money, I don't see the land, I see, I see this side of the, of Eatonville getting, getting developed, redeveloped, I don't see the other side of Eatonville getting, getting redeveloped. I live on the other side of Eatonville, on the other side of the bridge, all right? I live on Kennedy, I live on Lincoln Boulevard. I'm Julian Johnson Senior, that's my son. Um, I raised a, uh, uh, I'm proud of him, y'all, I'm proud of him, I raised a, a good young man. Um, that's not part of my speech, but I'm ecstatic to see men folk here tonight. I've seen and heard a lot of women, like I said, but I'm proud to see my brothers here tonight backing us up. Um, what I'm gonna say is, you guys didn't consult the elders of this town when y'all did this proposal. I'm, I'm positive y'all didn't, y'all didn't consult the elders of this town. I'm positive that you didn't consult, consult the men folk of this town. You know, this ground that y'all after is very sacred, it's very sacred, and it's not for just anybody to grab it. Um, I heard that at one of our meetings, this, this, this land is sacred, y'all. So whatever's built on this land, it needs to be made for the children, for education purposes. This was exemplified, um, years ago, this was told to us by Mr. Humphrey, this needs to be for educational purposes. That's not what's happening now, that's not what I see. What I see is, yep, what the lady stated, let's throw it up in the air, let's get somebody grab it, and let's move with it. No, we're not doing that here. We're here to fight. We're here to fight as, as a team, as a people, we're here to fight as a unit. We can't sell this out, y'all, we can't sell this out. We can't sell this out. We gotta... We gotta continue. I have more, but, um, my time is up.
All right, thank you. We have, um, Erica and actually Angela Thomas is building her two minutes to Mr. Erica.
Good evening, everyone. Today I had opportunity, I walk every morning about four or five miles. I had an opportunity. I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. Um, I walk about four or five miles every day, and this morning I ran into, uh, John. Uh, me and John been together since the day I moved here from Boston. So this difference in opinion, it hit me when we walked by each other, and I just kind of said, what's up? I kept walking. I was convicted. I turned back around and I went to him and said, that's not who we are at all. I put my hand on him and we went back because that's not who we are. When y'all talking all this stuff, I laughed. Jay Johnson, I love him like a son. He was my first young like kid in Boston, Massachusetts, because he buried so many kids in Boston. I went to Boston and got him, because I didn't want this young man at two years old, about two years old at that time. I didn't want him to be raised in Boston. I wanted him to be in Eatonville. I went and got him, and that's how they here, and I knew he was gonna be great because his father was great and he was one of the kids out of. Been doing this a long time. I'll be 65 next month. Let me say something to you. This ain't about, first of all, they're not talking about them purchasing the land because the school board can sell the land as of what did they put in it? It's their $14 million. The school board, this is about, if I'm not mistaken, if you want to amend what the 28 comp says, am I right? So we have gone so many places that we're not staying what it's really all about. We got a $5.9 million grant before I went out. 5.9 million from Governor DeSantis, reimbursable. So how we gonna do this 5.9 million, this dollar grant? We don't have no money. It ain't gonna be how much we clap. We gotta get 5.9 million dollars to get that. Now, somebody brought up cancer that one day and the water, our water is bad, folks. Not bad, what I mean by that. We got old pipes, asbestos. On my street, I lost my daughter. On my street, out of nine homes, six people died of cancer. Y'all quit playing with this, amen. Because some of y'all want, I moved here at a young age and bought a brand new house with the last penny I had and still living in that house for the last 37 years. I'm not those who say, I used to live here or something like that. I'm talking about when our water off, is your water off? You gotta be serious about this. That land right now would average to $40,000 an acre if we got it. To $4 million. $40,000 an acre. 100 acres, $40,000, $4 million. The high school, I went to the meetings, nobody showed up at the school board. I was there by myself. It was on the news and all, and nobody came to those meetings then. I was there. So when people get you wrapped up, just know all the facts. Because if you don't know all the facts, you gonna be like the lady who was caught in adultery. You drop your little rock and you walk off. Versus, oh, I might have blew it. I might have gotten to need you some more information. Hungerford Schools, they closed it down because they had so much asbestos, they had no other choice. It was called a sick school. They did it at Wheaton. They built another Wheaton. Because, because now about your rebuild. The rebuild, guess how many kids from Eatonville decided to go to Edgewater and didn't go to Hungerford? That was the truth. You know that was what it was all about. When Hungerford Prep, yes, when, I'm sorry. When, when Hungerford Prep, when, when, when Hungerford Prep reopened the school, now, now let, so I stand corrected because I won't be the one who act quiet when it's wrong. When Hungerford reopened, all of our Eatonville kids had an opportunity to go to Edgewater or Hungerford Prep. And, and at that time, Hungerford Prep, Hungerford Prep was considered a B school when they changed it. I said Hungerford Prep. That's not the case. The only thing I'm saying to all of us is know all the facts before you start just jumping. Because once you leave, one of the things about it, the school board can sell the property regardless. That ain't your part of, this is not about the seller of the property tonight. This is about if this, if this council and the mayor and council is gonna accept the changes in the ordinance. We're talking about, and the other thing, please, please understand this. If I was in Mayton right now and we was over here talking about putting affordable homes in Mayton, and some of the white community to get up and say, uh-uh, we don't want nothing in Mayton. We want Mayton to stay the same. We don't want one black person over there. We were saying all four verses that we shall overcome and how wrong it is. We better be careful that we don't do the same thing. Gestify? All right, thank you so much.
To the mayor, vice mayor, and our council people and our townspeople. I have been very quiet because I'm probably one of the newer residents of the Town of Eatonville. But I've always joked at, well, I'm serious. As long as I've been here, I've always called myself an honorary Eatonvillian. I love this community. I used to come here in the summers as a kid and do swimming lessons. I didn't know the significance of 1887, but I love the community. I came here, I bought a prominent piece of property here. I bought another piece of property, and then I bought another. I love Eatonville. But I was quiet because I really didn't know if I had the, the rights to have an opinion. Tonight I sat here, I saw the video. I know I have a right to have an opinion. Honestly, I know we need some changes in Eatonville. I know, and I'm very passionate right now. I get excited. We need some changes in Eatonville. But those houses, those townhouses, honestly, sir, they frighten me. They frighten me because I don't want to see a town within a town. I worked at the jail for the longest, and the jail was like a town within Orange County. We don't want to do that here. We do need some changes. You heard what the people have said tonight. Honestly, um, Mr. Bruce, Mr. Bruce said, and I wrote this down at the last meeting, you said that you were gonna improve town resources and improve water and transportation. You were making options for children to return to the Town of Eatonville, 1887 pride. That's all I've ever heard. You also said you wanted a relationship with the business owners, the nonprofits, everything. Tell the truth. I've called you so many times. I've text you. We never got together. When Mr. Falcone was here, Mr. Falcone had Lisa Quartelli represent him, which we probably should have had somebody from Eatonville. But he did reach out. He came to the chamber. He came to the communities. He participated in the parade. So if you honestly want to see good changes, I know we need changes here. I live here now. I'm a business owner, a homeowner. Everything that qualifies me as an Eatonvillian, I'm that, standing here. You gotta talk to the people and see what the people want. You can't come in and tell people what you think they want. You gotta talk to the people. And honestly, I know you had it on the board that day and you told us to come and talk to you. But I'm gonna use Angela Johnson's words. I'm gonna challenge you, just like you came back today and told us how Eatonville never owned the property. I'm challenging you to pick out some of the community leaders in this community, and I'm not talking about the people sitting up here. Pick up some of the community leaders, some of the people that work in the community, and talk to us and find out what we really want for the community. And that's all I want. All right, thank you.
Now, um, I have a phone up here for George Williams. Now, he has credit union, but I know they're in partnership with the Hungerford Park. Um, he didn't want to be over here to this time. I'm not sure how he would. Okay, George Williams.
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Town Council, and good evening, residents of Eatonville. Uh, my name is George Williams, and I'm with the Unity of Eatonville Federal Credit Union. And I wanted to come up here and just kind of give you a quick snapshot of our credit union and the, how we got started, and that'll kind of give you a little more of a perspective on, on things.
But this is, this is about Hungerford.
Exactly. Okay? Um, when, when we developed the credit union, we had to do research, economic research on the Town of Eatonville. And every key indicator that we looked at, Eatonville fell well below the neighboring community. I mean, it was a significant, uh, uh, a number. And when you look at that, you, you want to say, well, can we survive in that, in that environment? Things have to change in order for us to move forward. Now, I want to make sure that we clear up any misconceptions. We have no agreement with the developer. We're looking at this project for what it's worth. The project is gonna have an economic infusion to the community, and this community needs it. Uh, I think throughout the evening, we've heard about the infrastructure. I know there's been issues with the water. Things have to change in order for us to move forward. If adjustments need to be made, I think the developer is open to, or has had some, uh, town hall meetings and has received feedback, and they're willing to listen. But folks, things have to change in order for the community to move forward and in order for some of your children to want to come back and live in this community. That's, that's an important thing. If they don't come back, we need to think about what this community... I beg your pardon? Oh. You, you need to think fast forward five to 10 years from now. Your kids are not living here. They, you will done property. What are they gonna do with that property? You need to, we need to consider those things. Think about it. But anyway, I wanted to share that perspective. We're, we're for anything that's gonna be for the betterment of the community. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so the public's portion is close for this meeting. Attorney Shepherd, do I allow the...
Yeah.
The applicant to address... All right. So would the applicant like to discuss any of the concerns or issues tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor and, uh, council members. I'll be brief. Uh, we heard a lot of feedback tonight. Uh, and, uh, and as I, as I alluded to at the, at the beginning of my comments, I know that, uh, change can be scary. And, uh, and the proposal in front of, uh, in front of the Town Council is one that, uh, that will bring about change in the town. We are committed to working with the, uh, the leadership of this town. And, and Ms. Lavanda, you're absolutely right, uh, and, and when I, you know. I was raised to, uh, uh, that when, uh, when, when you're wrong, or, uh, wrong is not the right word, but, but yes, you have reached out, and we haven't had the opportunity to connect, but I, I am going to change that. Um, there's, uh, there was a lot said about, uh, about our engagement with the town. Uh, I can assure you that we did meet with, uh, with town leaders, not just the people, uh, sitting here at the dais, but, uh, the, the folks in the community that, uh, that we were aware of and are aware of, who, uh, who have a stake in, in what happens in the Town of Eatonville. I don't want, uh, there were several assertions about, uh, what are you doing? Uh, and, and I feel like we covered a lot of that, a lot of that earlier. What's the benefit? But ultimately, the decision that you have, that you all have in front of you is, uh, is something I want to remind the, the council of and, and the public, that today, without any change to the, uh, to the comprehensive plan, there, uh, there is an entitlement to, uh, to the construction of 350 units on the Hungerford property. That happens to actually be the exact same number that, uh, that, that has been requested here. So if, if this town, if this council were to, uh, were to say, hey, we're not moving forward with the, uh, with the amendment to the comp plan, our client could move forward with, uh, with closing on the properties and bring 350 new units to it. What, what is in front of you today is an amendment to the cop, uh, comprehensive plan that will allow for smart planning that will also, in addition to the 350 units that, uh, that are allowable as of right as we sit here tonight, to bring the types of uses and the types of amenities that frankly, we heard about. I saw a, uh, a, uh, a poster board that frankly had a lot of the, a lot of the same concepts and the same ideas that are, that are incorporated as, as part of, as part of our plan. So, uh, so we look forward to, uh, to working with you. We hope, uh, that, uh, that you will see fit to, uh, to adopt, uh, to move forward with adoption of the comprehensive plan amendments. And, uh, and if you have any questions, my team, as well as I, are here to answer questions for you, uh, so that, uh, so that you can make the most informed decision for yourself, as well as the town residents that you represent. Thank you.
All right, we're now opening it up for council discussion. Uh, council, councilor Randolph, you want to start? Y'all think you want to start?
Uh, briefly, the heart, thank you. Yes, I thank you, um, here in Washington, for the presentation, and thank you everyone for your, for your input and being here for Town Meeting, though. Um, the planing, um, that, uh, has been put before us, um, there is a lot of inconsistencies, and I see. Um, now, but I've had, uh, a tremendous hard time. I realize that this is a very, very important venture facing the Town of Eatonville. And I want to do my thing. As a representative for this town, I've, I've heard from the voices from so many people, and all I can say right now is that better than just, maybe at some point, we should go back to the table and just kind of look at things and look to see where we are and where we're going, where we're headed. So at this time, I want to say that, um, the proposal is inconsistent and not the way it was with the contract. I think you all put a lot of work into this, but I think we can do better. Thank you.
Councilor Lawrence, you'd like to give the same thing?
Uh, good evening. Uh, granted, I came out tonight. Um, first, I think we need to have clarity. We could be a lot further as a community if we have this kind of turnout more often than last minute. So a lot of times, we did the turnout like this when the knee was in the arm. So if someone is on their road and that knee was in the arm, then everybody wants to up cry and it's on the floor a long time. So let me, let me address the issue first off. And a lot of things to say tonight, but I'm just wanted to address this. A lot of people in this room have falsified, have told lies, have manipulated this whole ordeal. From the beginning, it should have been said that this is not about the contract. It's not about the contract. So everybody has showed up thinking it's about the contract. It's not about the contract. The contract is with Orange County. So if there's a beef, it should have been with Orange County schools. That's clear. Furthermore, we're here tonight to discuss the amendment to the comp plan. The comp plan was done in 2018, and it took me for 20 years. For 20 years. So our legislators and our political advisors, they think about 20 years out. So right now, we're at a point where we can make amendment to the comp plan. So whether we vote yes... So whether we vote yes, they can make it. And we vote no, they can make it. That's fair provided they decide to go through with the contract. Another part is to let you know. After this, Ms. Lamora, you still have... Can you go to the question, please?
Pronounce your last name, please.
St. Mary.
St. Mary.
It's close. I'll answer that.
So after this process, the next stage, which you and I have called this claim, is the development agreement, correct?
If there was a motion, and acceptance of the motion to accept these amendments, the next step would be the development.
Can you explain to everybody what happens in the development agreement?
Well, I'm going to defer to the town attorney on the development agreement.
Okay, sure. Because this is a planned development with different elements, mixed-use zones. Those are typically hammered out consistently with the code, and negotiations with developers, on what the developer wants, and what the town is willing to give up, on things like placement, like there's a requirement for open space, but where's it going to go? There's a requirement for drainage and attention, but where's it going to go? There's a requirement for parking, but where's it going to go? Those kinds of things are hammered out in the development agreement as well as potentially any of these are contributions that are relative, relevant to, and roughly proportionate to the impacts of the development if it were to go forward. So that's what happens, and the development agreement is nothing more than a contract. But it has to be consistent with both the constitution, which has to do with that whether or not what you're asking for is something you have a right to ask for, and you can get constitutional, and consistent with whatever the mixed-use zoning category allows, or what it currently allows, in terms of things like setbacks and all those other issues we just discussed. So that's what the development agreement is. It usually takes weeks to months to negotiate its way through, and all that process happens both publicly and privately. Privately, to put together a document, then publicly, to discuss that document, beat it up some in public, and then go back to the going period, and keep going. So sometimes that process plays out over many months with this maintenance town center, or it takes place over the course of just a few weeks, depending on whether everybody's on the same page.
The other thing that I just want to be clear on with the developers' agreement, with the town attorneys talking about it, you can negotiate things that aren't already in place. The HPRD, that is one of the ordinances that's here before you, has a lot of the standards in it. So I'm not certain that you'd be able to negotiate a lot of elements that aren't already associated with the planned unit development. So if you didn't have that zoning ordinance in place, you could negotiate a lot more.
Affordable housing and all different things?
Well, the affordable housing is a policy that is in your comprehensive plan that, regardless of what the applicant has said today, they will have to meet the policy in the comp plan, which is to provide affordable housing. The site plans that have been shown today have never been submitted as analysis for the planner to review for the consistency of the comp plan. It's only been the amendments. So everything that they've kind of done, it's not been vetted from that policy standpoint.
So we can say how much affordable housing can be brought to an amendment?
They would have to meet what the comp plan requires.
The next thing is plat approval, correct?
I'm sorry?
Plat approval?
Plat, it would be a preliminary plat. The HPRD ordinance requires a preliminary site plan with, I'm sorry, a preliminary plat with a site plan. So that would be... The other thing that, part of the conditions of the first reading, was the design guidebook. So that has been determined on when that's going to be. It's the council to determine that, but there's a design guidebook process, too.
The third step is what? Site plan approval?
Site plan approval, going through Planning and Zoning Board. Planning and Zoning Board will make recommendations, and then the town council hears it.
Next point is what, building permits, construction meetings?
Correct. And it depends on what phases, if any, in your development agreement, that you have those requirements of that process.
The reason I just walked through all those is important for us to understand and be educated on the process. We have so many people that are just human, like I say, wanting information, but we have to be at forefront. If we really want our people to make an educated decision, we got to give them the right facts. So we've had individuals out having meetings, so let me get clarity on that as well. Town council people usually don't come to some of those meetings like that and voice because it's a voting matter. It can become fun time in the council if we come to do that. That's why if we don't talk three means and say seven things in a public forum, we wait till it's settled here. So that gives a clarity to the misinformation that's been spread around the community that people aren't showing up. That's a key point, too. Another key point is, there's a lot of economics that can't be done. Development is going to happen, folks, but I agree with you. Development has to happen in consistency and continuation with the people of this town of Eatonville. It has to work together. We have to work together with developers. Developers have to work along with the residents and the legislative body. That's the only way we can get things forward. We can't be so closed-minded that development is not going to happen here in this town of Eatonville. This town of Eatonville was founded on economics and self-sustaining. How can we self-sustain right now if we don't have anything? Right now, if my elderly grandmother was still alive, she'd be over 100 years old. If she needed to go to the grocery store, she would have to go almost two miles, which makes Eatonville a what? A food desert. It makes us a food desert right now. When was the last time y'all got gas in this town of Eatonville? I remember the time of gas, like, back in the day. I remember we got out of the grocery store, the red store, the green store, all of that thing. That's what people don't understand. That's how we self-sustain. So if we want to self-sustain, we have to have development to happen, but it has to be in conjunction with the people and with the legislative body, too. Also, like I said again, whether we vote yes or vote no, the developers have that choice whether they can walk or they don't. So we're here tonight just to decide on, and we're going to allow them to have board partners and the new town commercials and all those things. I just wanted to take this moment to say that we have to do better. I'm not going to be pressured by developers. I'm not going to be pressured by the people that's blocking this meeting on that information. I'm not going to take that, because if our people internally, in this town of Eatonville, are doing wrong, we're going to hold them accountable. If the developers are doing wrong, we're going to hold them accountable. Thank you.
Councilor Daniels, I just have one point to clarify when we talked about the process, that we went right to the developers' agreement, but if you do vote and approve, there is that three-to-one day waiting period that I did not highlight, so I just wanted to talk about that. In the state, it does allow citizens to challenge the outcome of today.
Right.
Councilwoman Lawrence?
You stay right there for a minute. I like the people coming out tonight with ideas for the school board at this point. We need to be at the school board about this property, point blank, simple. I like the process you ran down about how the process... We have two apartment buildings going apartment complex coming down the road. Did they follow those processes?
Not to my knowledge.
So, y'all understand this. They did not follow that process, two apartment complexes. One of them now is building, they don't pay any fees at all. They have some companies to pay impact fees. They have had to pay no kind of fees, water titans, luggage fees, any of those things. So we are really... To my this project, this is what killed us down there. These people don't pay anything to the town of Eatonville. They are exempt in their development agreement, and they didn't bring it to the council, and they not go to the planner and the zoning board to get approved of the project on the claim. So I think it's an education to people that it's a process of what people need to do when it comes to town Eatonville. But right now, we have got robbed. We have got robbed with those two development companies. So that's another fight that should be stopped. I don't know why we have to stop that, but I am very upset that we let people come here without paying luggage fees, impact fees, water titans. But we get a homeowner that want to build a house, a company down there build a house, we can't even do water fees. You push your own water in. I don't understand. Then we get people signing permits. It's not qualified to sign permits. Look at the permits. If you want to pull the records, ask for the records. Who signed the permits so they could build their apartments, to start their apartments? Was it a qualified person planner to sign off on it? No. So my thing is, I love the process that you're going to leave people going to go through, but we need to hold everybody to the fight, everyone. Thank you.
Bye, Senator.
Good evening. I have another question for Attorney Shepherd.
Yes, sir.
If these amendments are passed, and the planning committee is slated for, if they're threatened and scared, go to the neighborhood and go to Eatonville?
If the members to the comp plan do not pass, then the current zoning request or rezoning request will also fail because, as written, it will be inconsistent. The reason the applicant is asking for a change in the comp plan is all going to have to be consistent with the comp plan. So if you don't change the comp plan, then this current plan is gone. However, to your point, it's already zoning on the property, and they can come in outright, which means they don't have to win except for what permits and site plan, and that's all it says. None of this stuff is really allowed now. If they don't rezon it and come in and apply for what yield or what kind of entitlements, as we call them, they can get based on current... The reason why entitlements are used is because it means, "I have the property, and I am entitled." If I have a single-family home, I can build a single-family house. I don't need your permission, I need a permit. And so I don't know what their yield would be, I don't know if it would include or not include apartments, or how many. I know what Mr. Bruce said. He may be right, I don't know. But there is something that they can build outright. I don't know what that would be. So yes, they could still do something. Your comp plan, though, is the payment tool that when you put it in place in 2018, you said at that time, you as a collective body, this is what we like to see in this area, these kinds of things. And what they're saying is, "We want to do something different than that. We have a different vision." That's what this is about.
So if we're able to... But we have to come back, one question, Attorney. If we have to come back and agree on four of the projects and not four of the amendment plans, how does that work?
Well, that actually is going to fall into the hands of the developer to make that decision. So what are their options? Number one, they could come back with a plan that is, still requires a rezone, but is consistent with the existing comp plan. Or they could come back with a plan which you may never get to see, except when it comes to site plan and plat approval, which doesn't require a rezone at all, simply requires them to put stuff on a board and say, "This is where I'm going to put this, this is where I'm going to put that, this is where the parking will be," and all of it is consistently zoned, if they can do that. I don't know that they can. But the decision as to which way that goes, that is 100% if they become the owner, or they are carrying the warrant, if you will, in the meantime for the school board, because technically, that's who's the applicant, only because the school board still owns the property. But they're doing this with the idea, if we get the approvals, they'll look close on the contract and will own the property. So which way they're going to go, don't know. I would imagine that would be subject to internal discussions with them, and perhaps future workshops with the town, but that's their call.
And since we have already a motion for this hearing, of course, we can't change the actual motion for approvals without the necessary amendments. I think we have to do a whole other...
Yes. You could not make, well, you can't give a rezoning as the point, because A, it's inconsistent with the comp plan unless you change the comp plan, and B, to your best, you don't get to rezone on the fly. You advertise for people to know what to expect, and then you go come up here and say, "Well, we're going to not do this, and we're going to have that," or all that, because people don't know. In theory, they might not adjust if it was a different plan, but until you see the plan, you don't know.
Senator, right?
Yes, my sir.
Senator, what the mayor was saying earlier, you're saying that the council has always had a problem taking something that's not going to take. If anything's going to be legal, it's going to be the project that we put down, and I would have been said, there'd be a problem. How something will go, and how it's going to be, the permits and everything, the project is bringing them?
And so I'd like the attorney to explain that.
And let me say, this is something that I think you all know. I had, one of the very first things I was asked to do is to look into that specific project. And let me be clear about this, so that there's nobody later looking to sue me or the town. Nothing that they have done, very much that the developer has done, has been illegal. But that's a different question than whether or not it should have gained approval in the first instance. And that is not, by me making a statement, it's not a political statement, because as we've discussed multiple times tonight, zoning has to be consistent with the comp plan. And when we reviewed both of those things regarding that project, after it was already approved, we found they were not consistent. However, when you have an inconsistency with the comp plan and the zoning, you have a very short window to challenge it, thirty days. Once that window stands, you're done. So they are legal, they are correct and proper. Whether they should have been approved, based on our view, probably not.
Senator, please, may I also address one of the other questions, just from a planning perspective? When you ask this developer, not the past developments that I came in in the middle of, but the developer hasn't really set a site plan. Yes, they do have entitlements on that land. I will go out on a limb, saying as a professional planner, the site plan that they're showing you will not meet the comp plan today, so they would have to revise that. The comp plan and the element today is more of a commercial, non-residential land use, and the plan that they've shown is more residential than commercial. So I believe that, yes, there are entitlements, but not in the way that they've presented could be done. So that's just a clarity for it. And they would definitely have to go through a developments agreement, and you could require them to meet the minimum commercial standards that you already have in place. So there are entitlements, but they're a little different than what they've been showing.
All right, thank you so much. To our listeners, you know, to the people here, it's a... To the audience, I think, formerly our town residents, the brothers from San Diego, and I find it quite offensive that, you know, the folks who are here, they're going to talk about this. I didn't get a call from them now, so I have to let my relatives and my friends go to San Diego. I didn't get a call from my fourth school, fifth grade school, which was named for, and all of them. I didn't get a call. But I agree with you, a very well, my coach worked and said, "Let's sell." I agree, this, I guess, if we're not singing about both of them, we're... And I also have been told, or people are embarrassed, because of the car, female car, I'm sure, because of the air conditioning. That's not the way we handle it. That's not the way that you address, how you... You can't put three, because of the climate change. Not just the city, but the city, the town, the city itself. Not only the city, but the... It's the city, it's the city, the government, the district, the... So we can't be so, you know, just...
I see, and I want to make sure, there are three ordinances.
Correct.
Two of them, open speech.
Correct. And actually, because of where we're at, all of them are open speech, because we're in a public meeting, the applicant and those who are opposed can hear all of the evidence that's been presented, and know, when they had their chance at the podium, what they were addressing, because by then, they'd already heard the applicant speak, they'd heard the staff planner speak, and so forth. But when you leave these proceedings, anything that's quasi judicial, which goes to the comments made by the vice mayor earlier, or actually, Mr. Lawrence Daniels, you can't go into these public settings and declare, "I am for or against," something that's quasi judicial, because those proceedings are based on evidence, and the evidence comes in a hearing like this one, not in those... and the evidence comes in a hearing like this one, not in those proceedings. And so, whether it offends people that you're not showing up or not, or not commenting on it, or it upsets their offensive, if they were, if you were to say, "I'm dead-set against this rezoning project because," fill in the blank reason, you would potentially disqualify yourself from making a decision, and that's not the position you want to be in. I know, because I've dealt with cities who've made those mistakes and had to defend them on something called a petition for their statutory, many times. So, that's what we're trying to prevent. The first two items are legislative decisions. Those are the two that deal with the comp plan. And you can decide about those things outside the meeting, inside the meeting, when you're running for office.
And I can speak my piece.
You can speak your case, but on the zoning, if you were outside, you couldn't.
Vice Mayor, any questions?
A question. For those meetings, if it's posted, could we have more than one consequence if they're posted?
It's not, excuse me, I apologize. It's not about the posting, it's about what's there. So, if it's posted, and you sit quietly, or if it's not posted, and you sit quietly and don't engage, you're good. No sunshine, no violation, you're not telling people how you plan to vote, you haven't considered all the evidence yet. But, if you get baited into a, "Well, I want to know where Councilperson so-and-so stands." And you answer, now you have a problem.
All right.
What about, uh, sorry? What about individuals that sit on boards? Does it say, is that?
If it's a quasi-mudicial decision, and they sit on a board, yes.
All right, so, and I just want to be clear, because I want to speak from the heart right now. I, I, I'm not going to...
We're in a public meeting, no matter what, it's good.
I just never know. So, African Town, Hobson City, Moby Hill, Randolph, Fort Moos, Free Town, Rosewood. You know where I'm going. In the 18th, 19th century, there were 1,200, even black towns settlements, but only 500 had the format of a town, of a municipality. Today, there are 15. Simply because I say "black town" doesn't make me a racist. However, because we could not go anywhere else. I grew up on the west side of Winter Park. Eatonville is here because of an agreement. Because you, they wanted you here, and I'm not saying they against you. But, you didn't just settle in Eatonville for nothing. There's a system that put you here, and I'm not being radical. I'm not being radical. There's a system that drove I-4 down the middle of your community. And right now, you cannot put out of vote on OCPS. We can't say, "It's the contract, it's the contract." OCPS, I believe, will kill us. If this town says no, which the citizens, I've been keeping track, have said, "No, no, 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 no," and then there's a yes, then I believe OCPS will hear it. But, if this town says yes, then that's what OCPS will hang their hat on and say, "Well, the town won it." So, we can't sit here and put it out for OCPS. If we're going to do what we do. If, if what, even though this vote is about the changes being made to a comprehensive plan, we can still vote knowing the changes. And you're absolutely right, the building can go ahead and go the way it's the plan, but something tells me they didn't want that, or we wouldn't be here. There's something about the changes that makes it more equitable, not equitable, more economical. But, that's your job, that's your job. Again, this is not a race thing, but we are one of 15. That makes us historic. If that land, we're down to the last 100 acres. If that land is gone, it's gone. And no, we don't hold contract to it. And yes, this mayor has tried to meet, to speak her piece with OCPS. It hasn't happened yet. I do have one question about those 17 acres. There is a contract of the 17 acres. Attorney Bruce, would you please come to the line? Or there was a contract, I don't know if it's changed. Attorney Bruce, do you have information about the contract of the 17 acres?
Um, what I understand about it, Mayor, is that, uh, is, that our client, at one point in time, was, uh, was awarded it. However, we terminated that, terminated our rights under that contract. OCPS had another party or two that they were going to offer that land to, but I don't know, I haven't kept up with any subsequent discussions. My guess is that because the world, the economics have changed around, around land development. My guess is that, uh, is that that opportunity's gone away.
So, that concerns, because the last information I received, and it could change since then, was that there was a contract of the 17 acres by one of your, uh, one of the partners in this deal. That's additional housing that really should be considered with this plan. And it has been brought up, and I know it's not the 100 acres, I know that, but when we look at it in its totality, it does make a difference on what's happening. That 17 acres can be done, something else. OCPS has, and I said this before in the first meeting, OCPS has disrespected this town council. They have disrespected this town, and they have disrespected this mayor. And this is not you, I'm not supposed to, I'm just being passionate. But, I truly believe that this conversation needs to be had. No, it did not belong to the town, but it was there for the town. It placed in trust, just as we would place money in trust for our kids, we would expect that money to be used for our kids. That's what the trust is about. So, until OCPS is serious, and they treat us like adults, and we treat us like adults, then I think that we need to wait. I truly believe that this council, that we stand together in unison with them, because this is not the right environment right now. And while I'm here, and usually I would put this in my closing argument, but there are two people that stood up there, and I smiled and I grinned. But, I'm not smiling and grinning now, because one of those was the former planner that has 97, 80 years going on, because of his signature. That's why I did not go before the planning and zoning meeting, understood and talked about an ordinance that you just admitted yesterday, day before, maybe Friday. And you gave it to police to not see, and you gave it to the town clerk, so that she would email it, so now it's public record, but you can't do an ordinance without a study for impact fees. And if you were the developer, then that study should have been done a long time ago. In regards to the pool, y'all, I teach. Our kids, we need to know how to spend. That's one of my, my, that's one of the things I wanted. There was someone that stood forward and said that they would give the money for the pool. But, then the question was, is that the best use of funds? Because there is a risk associated with the pool. And because the pool is too old, do you build a new one? Do you put it in another place? And if we give you the money, it is still going to be there in five years. So, there are other ideas. So, that idea is cool, but someone did come forward. I'm not ignoring the pool. But, let's go back to the finances. We have CPA, and I'm getting that right. You know, everything is in its place and in its time. This development is going to affect that. If we have pipes, 60-plus million, yes, it's 4 million, 10, 4 million, 4.6 million over, over the 10 million that OCPS wants. I don't know what 10 million is 1 billion, I don't think it's that much. However, it's based on an appraisal from, what, 2014? So, if the current value, say, was 20 million, we get 10 million. But, we don't quite know what that current value is. So, there are questions about the deal, and is the town getting its share, its fair share? Because if all I need is 10 million, I don't really care about the praise down and after that. You get what you get, don't have a fit. But, that's only unless you have a fix. And I think we hear the town people saying, "We have a fit." Because I think it can be done then. And yes, we've had opportunities that have, but that doesn't mean we don't get one more. And in the past, I don't know what happened, but I do know that this mayor has already reached out. I think we can get it done. We can't fight among ourselves. We have to give, and we have to give and get, give and get, whatever. But, we have to come to a agreement. But, I think that we can do it, if we come together. If we... And it's only going to be no more than 350,000, it's stretched. Like, in the current, that's what you stated earlier.
Yes, ma'am.
I just got it, I'm not going to help you. Impact fees. We will all be negotiating in the world, but I don't think it is going to trump impact fees being imposed. This administration bought for the fire and safety impact fees. And it's shut down two, three times, and that's okay, we'll get it right. But, impact fees are different kinds of impact fees. In order to get the building impact fees, we need clean, because that's how we kind of know what we're going to need. And that's what we're working on. And in regards to people raising money for the pool, if I ask you, "Where is the money over and above what you need? Where's that money going?" And you can't answer the question, please don't come up here to this lecture and tell me about grants, and saying kids, and kids, and I want kids all day. I always want respect for them. I go to sleep with kids. But, these, those two persons and their ideas and their statements, it has a lot to do with this vote for me. Once that land, not just the 100, because don't forget about the 17. Once, because that's housing. Once that land is gone, it's gone. Historical, 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 we're the last of 15. I don't think it's going to be anymore. Let's just save us, just save us. And that's not being racist. But, that's, we're keeping our little cutout. We're keeping our cutout, because it's worth, we just need to work it back.
Amen.
Counselor?
Ma'am, I have a question. And it's key that I find this out tonight. I'm big on transparency. So, you're telling me that we knew that there was possibility that the same development group purchased or had a contract on the land down on the other side of town? But, it was not communicated to the council and all that?
I've been talking about the 17 acres for a while, go back to the minutes. I have to be, wait, let me finish. I did a public records request, that's how I found it.
But, it was not recommunicated to the council, that's all I'm saying. I'm saying, this is how we eliminate a lot of confusion and all that, and the people are educated. So, if it was said a while ago, maybe the people would be thinking a lot different also, but that was not told to them.
That was not told, again, in a meeting, uh...
In a public meeting, we could tell, we could say that about us, correct?
But, actually, it wasn't in a public, it was all in between, you know?
Right, but, ma'am, that could have been said in one of our meetings, correct?
You mean the council meeting?
Yes.
You can say anything that starts with R, again, the council meeting.
The item was not written in court.
Right.
So, that's what I'm saying.
But, I'm saying it's not.
But, that's why I'm saying that we waited till the last minute till the news and the army didn't say. And we transferred, they fall into bed, people could make their decisions and collaborate, and that's what's happening.
I voted, I voted for the first time, I'm telling you.
Okay, I beat you on that.
It was a number say, no, it's not.
I beat you on that. But, my last one there, we can go ahead and put this over, is, a lot has been said tonight. Now, I further want to say that the food, the children, and all that, but I think that we have not addressed the dolphin in the room. And the dolphin in the room was that the House of Trust had to release the deed restriction in order for the food to be torn down, and in order for the emergency and all that to happen, right?
What are you talking to me, I'm sorry? They get to court.
They say what now?
They have to, they took it to court.
And the trust had a million dollars on that, correct? And then they got a hundred thousand dollars.
And my vote is still no, I mean, I don't understand. And I'm not fighting, but my vote is still no. I'm not really having to be moved, I know it.
But, ma'am, I'm saying that for the education purposes, so the people would know. I'll take a lot of people knew that the trust had, um, received a million dollars, and that deed restriction would have slipped off, and it slipped in need for what? Education purposes, correct?
With us, if the deed was still on the land, and there would have been a restriction. So, yes, the deed was removed a while ago, a while ago.
Right, so, ma'am, I think you're trying to be aggressive.
No, 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 I'm trying to get where you're going.
I'm asking the people who are not, I was saying, who that?
But, does it change your vote tonight?
Come here, ma'am, move on that, move on.
Now, I have a question, you're not here to get it, does it change the vote? Move it to the movement, all right, okay, thank you. All right.
There has to be a motion, sorry, ma'am.
Orders by orders.
Yes, orders by orders. First, you gotta have a motion, one more of them.
Okay.
And the first one would be, I think, 2022-07, am I right? 07, so that's the second, this is the comp plan.
All right, so, motion for the passing of ordinance 2022-7. Comp plan. Is the move, is there a second?
A second.
Is the move a second? All of you, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Well, what was the motion to it? We're not, I'm not sure.
It was to approve.
Okay, and so, I couldn't...
So, you're in the hospital, you're here.
I just don't know who voted which way.
What was it?
All right, we're not still voting.
Yeah. But, right now, I'm not sure which was the motion, and I'm not sure who voted for and who voted against, so, let's make it clear. Are we, is our union to approve it, or are we union to deny it? And do we need to go to next?
Mayor, you need to be clear for...
The first vote is for ordinance 2022-7.
You didn't get it read it? Okay. Ordinance 2022-07, and ordinance of the town of Eastfield, Florida, ordinance number 2022-7, amending the text of the town's comprehensive plan to amend the text of future land use development policy 1.6.8, for future land use map and residency and testing tables, providing for transmission, providing for sustainability, providing for conflict, and providing for effective date.
I, there's a motion to approve 2022-7. Is the move, is there a second?
A second.
Ms. King, would you take a roll call?
Yes. Counselor Miranda?
No.
Counselor Matt Daniels? Counselor Matt Theor Washington?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Martin Daniels?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, the next comp plan amendment is 2022-8. And it is the same, we don't really know whether you're union to approve or not approving the amendment.
Would you please read the panel, Ms. King?
Ordinance 2022-08, and ordinance of the town of Eastfield, Florida, ordinance number 2022-8, amending the town's comprehensive plan to change the future land use map designation for property generally located south of East Kennedy, Billmar, and west of North Wyman Road, from commercial to mixed use on the town's official future land use map, providing for transmission, providing for sustainability, providing for conflict, and providing for effective date.
Is there a motion to obtain ordinance 2022-8? A move. Is the move a second?
Nay.
Is the move a second? Ms. King, please take a roll call.
The second was, Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Counselor Miranda?
No.
Counselor Matt Daniels?
Nay.
Counselor Matt Theor Washington?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Martin Daniels?
Aye.
They're done.
Nay.
All right, so that would fail as four one. Now, that would mean, because the zoning request, the rezoning request, is still inconsistent with the comp plan, because you've not voted to approve the comp plan. But, if Mr. Bruce would like us to vote on this matter anyway, we will, but it's unnecessary, because they could not possibly approve it legally, do you understand? Okay, so, based on that, we don't have to take action on the last matter. Unless you want us to put it on the record, okay.
What is the decision?
The decision was, Mr. Bruce acknowledged that we, with this zoning request, would now be inconsistent with the comp plan, because it was not agreed to be amended. So, at least this version of this plan is failed, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, now, Mr. Ford.